Good evening. It is Tuesday, December 6th, 2022. This is a meeting of the Akrushinet Board of Selectmen. Is there a motion to call the meeting to order?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Please rise for the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
For those of you who are, will be watching this meeting, we are in, we are in the, we're at the Akrushinet Council on Aging, where we just celebrated the career of Mr. Jerry Bergeron, who served the town for over 50 years in his capacity in so many, so many ways, primarily as a firefighter, public safety officer. And so we just had a nice, you know, time to celebrate Jerry's career here. And also, so we decided to do our selectmen's meeting here. And something hopefully we'll do at other places in town, like our library. We've got so many great facilities in town that we should showcase those every once in a while. But with that said, please, our November 7th, 2022 minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Great. As far as meeting mails, we don't have anything from meeting mail. However, gentlemen, there is an item in FYI that I'm going to put in as appointments, under the appointments. We have Anthony from EverSource got an important message to share with us. This is more of like a public service announcement. So Anthony, if you want to grab the podium, there's no microphone there, but at least it gives you a little structure.
Yep. Thanks, Mr. Chairman, Board of Selectmen. So as I communicated by email last week, we just wanted to let our customers know that with, everyone is coping with increased energy prices, including rising energy bills. We recognize our role in keeping bills as low as possible. And we just wanted to make our customers know that there is municipal aggregation that they can sign up for through the town. On January 1st, our, our basic supplier rate is going up from 17.9 cents to 25.6 cents a kilowatt hour. That's roughly a 23% increase, about $46 on supply portion of the bill. And from November 30th through December, customers will be getting letters in the mail or emails saying that there's municipal service available if they choose to switch. It's basically an education campaign to let people know that we understand that it's high prices, but there are other options. And to make sure, to do their diligence and compare rates to see what works out best for them. So when somebody gets that in the mail, it's not a scam. It's not anything malicious to take a look at it.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks for offering that up. All right. Next item, we're going to pass over item number one. Next item on the agenda is Heather. Talk to us about the Council on Aging renovations.
Thank you again for joining us today. Make this short and sweet, sorry. So as you saw, the hardware is installed for us to have the automatic doors. So you would just push a button, the doors would be open. We're replacing the exterior doors at the same time. I was hoping that would be done for your visit today. We didn't quite get there, but they are in, they will be installed shortly. Our flagpole, if you notice when you pulled in, has recently been replaced. Looks beautiful. I'm working plates at Town Hall on that. I think that's about it for right now.
Great. Thank you. Place looks awesome.
Excellent.
Thank you very much. Lucas and the floor.
Oh, yes, yeah. Actually, kudos to Lucas because he's been living here. And I know he, he kind of works off hours. And he's worked with us around our seniors and our programs. So we've had no disruption to service. He's, he replaced our kitchen door recently. So we've done a lot done working with him. And we're very grateful for the effort that he's put in. So I just wanted to give him a shout out.
Great. Can I make some work of the floor?
We are replacing the floor. We have it. We've purchased the flooring on both the exterior entryways. But that, the doors have to go into the process. The doors go first and the flooring. But Lucas will also be doing that in-house to save us the money.
All right. Very good. And if anyone's in? Okay.
Sorry, I tried to make sure.
Yeah, no, it's all good. Thank you very much. Thank you, Heather. All right. Next item, number three, an update on the phone system. Mr. Kelly?
As you know, Nick's been working on the new phone system. We're currently at the end of life of the other system. And we have lost the ability, capability to upgrade. Instead of purchasing phone trunks through a reseller, we were able to purchase them directly through clearly IP. And I'm sure, Nick, if you have any questions, we'll describe it more. But what it really happens is the new phone server is almost installed, 85% programmed, new directory recording is being worked on. All the phones have been assigned and they're being put in the offices. The voicemail boxes have been built. And automatic updates and nightly backups of the new system are active. So we will have a system that actually works and can call among the various buildings.
Will the phone number show the right phone number when you call someone?
Yes.
So when a particular office calls me or any one of the selectmen, it'll show what office is actually calling like they used to because for the last four or five years, that's all gone to hell in a handbasket. It's kind of, you don't know who's calling you if they don't leave a message. So it's kind of a pain in the butt.
That's all set.
Thank you.
Great. All right. Good stuff. Next item on the new business, we have Dina St. Pierre and Jen Als from the library.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us here today. As I hope you know, there are always good things happening at your public library. But we've recently had a couple of even more noteworthy things happen, which I'm here to talk about today. And the library trustees and I are excited to make an announcement, which I will get to in a bit. But first I'll just start with some good news. At their November meeting, the library trustees accepted a donation from the Akrushinet Road Race in the amount of $3,000. The plan is to use this money in support of summer programming, specifically the extremely popular summer concert series, which is great, but costs a lot of money to put on. So the plan as of right now is to use the money for that. On behalf of the trustees, we send our thanks and appreciation to Mr. John Braun and the entire Akrushinet Road Race Committee members from 1980 through 2022. There will be a small plaque in the library to note the support received. And we will also list the committee members' names from 1998 through 2022. I know that at a recent selectmen's meeting, Mr. Kelly read you part of an email I had sent informing your office of the library's first award in the FY '23 state aid cycle. I wanted to reiterate here today how important the news is about our state aid award as state certification is critical to our library's success and the aid itself supplements our appropriated budget. We made it into the first round of libraries approved this year, in part due to the fact that I finished the reports in plenty of times that my board can approve and submit them, but also due to the fact that we meet the full requirements of the state aid program, which is key. Our initial award for FY '23 is $13,713.37. We can expect the second award to be equal to or more than the first. And for comparison, the FY '16 award was $14,430.81 for the entire year. I mention FY '16 because it was my first full fiscal year in Akrushinet. And also at the halfway point, we relocated the library to 232 Middle Road. That's seven years ago this month, which is hard to believe. But that increase that we're seeing to state aid is due in part to the increased circulation we've seen to non-Akrushinet residents since relocating to Middle Road. We're in a convenient spot for residents of other communities. We're a closer library to them than their own town or city library. Our circulation numbers certainly dipped at the start of and during COVID. We aren't yet back to our 2019 numbers. 2019 was our highest year to date, but we are on our way. The staff and I work hard every day to provide great service to the residents and the greater community, whether that be in the material we purchase for the collection, the readers advisory we provide, or the programming we bring, among other things. Now to my most exciting news for today. I mentioned our seven-year anniversary at Mill Road is later this month. We wanted to do something in celebration of the anniversary, something to thank our loyal patrons and residents of Akrushinet for the support through the years and something that will hopefully guarantee their support for years to come. We talk about the library as being a free service, or the material, you borrow it for free. But there's always a couple of sticking points to that. And one of the sticking points is the dreaded overdue fines. There are memes about library fines and overdue books. Sitcoms have made fun of overdue fines and library books through the years. Most librarians sincerely wish we could turn the other way when a fine pops up on the screen and not even tell the patron about the fine. But they've certainly been a sticking point. And whether or not the max fine is $2 or $5, depending on what you've borrowed, we know that in all seriousness, there are people who maybe can't afford that $2 charge. And if you borrowed a ton of kids' books and they're all late and you owe $2 on every single one of them, and you suddenly owe $20 or $30, that can pose a substantial challenge. And since our library prides itself on being a welcoming space, we fully acknowledge it's hard to be welcoming when you're telling someone they owe you money because nobody likes to hear that, whether it be a nickel or $10. So in light of all of this, effective no later than December 21st, which is our anniversary on Middle Road, we will be a fine-free library. And so what that means is there will no longer be late charges on the vast majority of items that we circulate in Akrushinet. The library staff, the trustees and I, of course, we want to ensure that everyone in our town and the community at large has access to library resources in the most equitable way possible. And part of going fine-free removes the barrier that fines may present for some residents of the town and the community at large. We join ranks with other libraries throughout our sales network, as well as many public libraries across the country. Libraries that are already fine-free have experienced increases in circulation, increases in patron card registration, and many other positive benefits, as you can imagine. As a sign of greater goodwill, the trustees have also approved that as of no later than December 21st, any existing fines on patron accounts will be waived. So if you've borrowed books in the past and you returned them late, the fines will be wiped out by December 21st. There's a lot of work that has to happen behind the scenes, which is why we are giving it to December 21st. So in the meantime, if the patron wants to pay their fine before December 21st, they certainly can, but we're not encouraging them to do it, except in rare cases when the fines are not on Akrushinet items. So they still will be charged if they go to another library that's not fine-free and they borrow an item from another library, or if they're blocked. The trustees and I are going to meet this Thursday to revise the library's circulation policy. I'll then work with the sales network to get everything finalized. We hope to send out an FAQ in our monthly newsletter this Friday. And we should be making announcements on social media by the end of the week. But we wanted to make sure that you heard it from us first. We're super excited about it.
That's great.
If you can't tell.
We've got Mr. Bergeron here. Jerry, we've got the signs up around town. Maybe we can coordinate an announcement.
Oh, that would be great.
That we are going fine-free. Libraries fine-free.
That would be cool.
We'll talk about that.
All right. I like it.
Make sure you specify library, right? A tax-free library. Fine-free.
But we think that'll be a nice holiday treat. And we hope it will encourage families to come in during school vacation week and then in the new year with a fresh start if you have existing fines. I also just want to clarify, if you borrow something and you lose it, you will still be charged the replacement cost for that item. So there will still be some sort of a charge. But if you return it a little bit late, no harm.
I like it.
Yeah.
Common sense.
Common sense, yes.
Good stuff. Do more than that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may? Dina, I just want to personally thank you. I think you're doing a wonderful job, you and your whole staff. And if you want, email me the list of fines my wife probably has at the library. A lot of kids' books in my house, too.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Henley. I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you all. Yes.
Great stuff.
Holiday hours?
We are closed Saturday, Christmas Eve, so Saturday, December 24th, and Monday, December 26th, in recognition of Christmas. And then the following week, we're also closed Saturday, December 31st, and Monday, January 2nd, for New Year's. Otherwise, there are 45 hours a week waiting to see you.
Great job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for everything. You guys do awesome. All right. Next item, item number two. Is that in here? Board of Health and Intermunicipal Agreement. Is that what that is?
Next page.
Mr. Chairman, we had the town council review the agreement as to form. It is a, this is an agreement that will replace the identical agreement that has been between the town, the town of Fairhaven and the city of New Bedford for shared services on its intermunicipal agreement. Mr., the town council said that it is very typical of the agreements that these alliances use across the state. And he advised at the request of the Board of Health that we continue and that it be executed.
All right. That's a nine-page, 22-paragraph document. Mr. Henley, if you would please start reading.
How much time do you have?
Gentlemen, any questions, any thoughts here?
I believe this is already something we have in place.
Yes.
Just updating.
Are there any? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Great. All right. Next item. We've been accused of an open meeting law violation by a gentleman, Mr. Patrick Higgins, who resides, I believe, in Alabama. So we sent this off to town council. They've submitted a response. We just need to adopt the response. Is that right?
Mr. Chairman, town council and I have been going back and forth on this till about 2:30 today. The board needs to acknowledge the receipt of the open meeting law complaint, discuss the allegations generally. I could do that for the record for the board. Then the board, discuss the board's response, review the draft prepared by council, confirm that the factual representations therein are made, and vote to issue a response consistent with the discussion and the approved draft. And this is a complaint that was issued in three different issues. One was Mr. Higgins said the executive session notice concerning the ARPA road and infrastructure discussion did not warrant both purpose six and seven under the open meeting law. We explained that it concerned the ARPA on Slocum and discussion. And one of the purposes for executive session on something like this is it's federal, state, and county funds. And in advance of determining whether there's any taking or easements necessary, the board should go into executive session. And we explained as such to Mr. Higgins in our response. And also note to him that there was a discussion at length, an open session on November 22nd regarding the ARPA funds and the projects. The second complaint was that we did not list the appointment of the treasurer-collector, the name, on the agenda. We clarified it and told Mr. Higgins that it was not an appointment for the treasurer-collector, but it was for a part-time clerk in that office. And that, yes, we did overt, did not, we omitted the name. And so we will, on December 20, ratify, validate, and confirm such appointment. We also noted the complaint included that we did not list the name of a building commissioner appointment. However, there was no name of the candidate put in the agenda because the discussion was rather on whether we hire a full-time building commissioner or we share a commissioner with another town. And that was reasonably under the description of the agenda item. So there was no violation there.
All right. Look, I don't think there's any ill intent or concerted effort to violate open meeting law. We've got small staff. We do our best. And things move pretty quickly at this level. So what do you need from us, Jamie, just to accept this report?
I need the board, a motion acknowledging the receipt of the open meeting law complaint. And that the open meeting law complaint was read by the board and generally discussed in the record. And that the board's response has been, will be reviewed by the board, prepared, the one that's prepared by town council. And that you, there's a vote to issue the response consistent with the discussion and the draft prepared by council.
I get that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, number four. Treasurer-collector tax collection discussion.
As the board knows, Mr. Chairman, when we looked at outstanding taxes in our previous discussion, we noted that there was approximately $450,000 in outstanding taxes that had yet to be leaned. The interim treasurer-collector has taken action to lean the taxes that are, that had been from the same people who had not paid previously, that a lien existed. So that's been processed. And so we've made sure that the outstanding taxes in the amount of $156,814.47, the town's rights for collection have been protected. Letters are being sent on $307,471.69. As you can see, it involves for FY '20, 26 bills; for FY '21, 43 bills; and FY '22, 82 bills. Once the letters are sent and sufficient notice given, then the town will be able to lean those outstanding taxes and the town's rights will be protected. I wish to congratulate the treasurer-collector's office, both the interim and the assistant, in seeing that this is done so we can protect the interests of the town.
A motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, golf equipment purchases. Mr. Tippel.
I believe you gentlemen have in your possession a memo from Mr. Isaac outlining a couple items that we were going, we need to either update or purchase. And those would be purchased from Article 9 appropriations. So Mr. Isaac asked me to come to the meeting tonight to address any questions you might have on those individual items.
Total spending request is still $46,139?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Have a nice night.
Thank you.
All right. It is that time of year where we have to approve all the licenses for renewal. And for open meeting, we have to read the name, location, and address, correct? All right. So 2023 license renewals, Common Vic, Rodney Fernandez Country Whip, 1173 Main Street, Manuel Correa Seafood Hut, 2 South Main Street, Thomas O'Brien Rochelle's, 590 594 Main Street, Carlos Rodrick's, TC Donuts, Dunkin' Donuts, 150 South Main Street, Jeffrey Pereira, Jeffrey's Pizza, 161 South Main Street, Joe Marmello, The Mill, 156 South Main Street, Joe Marmello, Captain's Place, 162 South Main Street, J.J. Pereira, Silverbrook Farms, 934 Main Street, Lionel Demers, American Legion, 71 Hope Street.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The various license holders that are highlighted there have to be held.
Okay. All right. Lionel Demers, American Legion, 71 Hope Street, Fon Lee, Cam's Cuisine, 132 Main Street, Manuel Gulat, Century House, 107 South Main Street, Natasha Silva, Blue Point Restaurant, 6 Dayton Street, Nancy Johnson, Blue Lantern Cafe, 605 Main Street, Victoria Pont, VFW number 7239, 28 Roosevelt Street, Steve Cazara, Ponderosa, 242 Robinson Road, Sue De Silva, Rivers End Cafe, 7 1/2 Tarklin Hill Road, Keith Santos, Keith's Orchards, 1149 Main Street, Doug Corre, Akrushinet Creamery, 240 264 Main Street, Juan Rivera, Akrushinet Cafe, 158 Main Street, Eric Roseland, New England Farms.
That's hell.
That's a.
Baggot.
He's paid.
He's paid. He's paid. New England Farms, 158 Main Street. So is there a motion to approve Common Vic licenses with the exception of Silverbrook Farms? Yeah, but I didn't read, I didn't read those, the ones that I read.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. All Alcohol Club, Lionel Demers, American Legion, number 265, 71 Hope Street, Victoria Pont, VFW, 7239, 28 Roosevelt Street. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All alcohol license. Fon Lee, Cam's Cuisine, 132 Main Street, Joe Marmello, Captain's Place, 162 South Main Street, Manuel Gulat, Century House, 107 South Main Street, Natasha Silva, Blue Point Restaurant, 6 Dayton Street, Paul Hippolito, Blue Lantern Cafe, 605 Main Street, Sue De Silva, Rivers End Cafe, 7 1/2 Tarklin Hill Road, Steve Cazara, Ponderosa, 242 Robinson Road, Dana Presmazuski, Akrushinet River Valley, 685 Main Street. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I only have one question. The Blue Lantern Cafe was under a different name for the Common Vic. And we just said Paul Hippolito. I believe that was a previous owner.
Okay.
So should it be Nancy Johnson Blue Lantern Cafe for the all-alcohol license?
Yes.
So just with that one correction, Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. All Alcohol Package Store, Gary Hathaway, Scuttlebutts, 590 South Main Street, Mr. Patel, Chuck's Liquors, 2, 172 South Main Street, Merle Manoha, Bonvilles Market, 142 South Main Street, Antonio Caldera, Town Wines, 162. Antonio Caldera, Town Wine, 1 Middle Road. Oh, hold on, is there another one?
Yes.
Mario Silveira, Jason's Variety, 270 Main Street. And Eric Roseland, New England Farms Inc., 158 Main Street. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Restricted Music, Lionel Demers, American Legion, 71 Hope Street. Victoria Pont, VFW, 28 Roosevelt Street. Fon Lee, Cam's Cuisine, 132 Main Street. Joe Marmello, Captain's Place, 162 South Main Street. Manuel Gulat, Century House, 107 South Main Street. Nancy Johnson, Blue Lantern Cafe, 605 Main Street. Sue De Silva, Rivers End Cafe, 7 1/2 Tarklin Hill Road. Steve Cazara, Ponderosa, 242 Robinson Road. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Automatic Amusement, Lionel Demers, American Legion, 265, 71 Hope Street. Victoria Pont, VFW, 720, 39, 28 Roosevelt Street. Nancy Johnson, Blue Lantern Cafe, 605 Main Street. Sue De Silva, Rivers End Cafe, 7 1/2 Tarklin Hill Road. Steve Cazara, Ponderosa, 242 Robinson Road. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Class 2 License Used Car, Mark Sinnerizio Jr., Repwell Corp., 734 Main Street. Raymond White, White's Auto, 211 Middle Road. Frank Knox, Hayes Street Realty, 3 Hayes Street. Ted Chopper, Ted's, 308 Middle Road. Luke Nemec, South Coast Premium, 127 South Main Street. David Farland, Shaw Modern Auto, 118 South Main Street. Kevin Murray, Murray's Auto Sales, 75 Lambert Street. Dennis Caplet, South Main Street Entertainment, I guess?
Enterprises, I think it is.
Enterprises, 16 South Main Street. Where is that located? Right across from Custom Auto, right?
Like by the C. D. O. T. A.?
Okay. Lot right across the street.
Custom Auto.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next one, Class 3 Junk, Mark Sinnerizio Jr., Repwell, 734 Main Street. Ray LeBlanc, Ray Sales and Service, 4 Morton Lane. James Lake Hawk III, Lake Hawk Auto, 1256 Main Street. Alfred Bonville, Fred's Collision, 36 Sloker Street.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Kelly, gentlemen, maybe you guys can help me out. On South Main Street, heading towards the Fairhaven Line, there looks to be what looks like a junkyard. There's all kinds of crap all over the place. And I don't see any of that here for a license. So I think the first job, or one of the first jobs of Mr. Building Inspector, send him down there, please. Get a survey of the situation and whoever owns that property. Ask them, I think we're going to do some type of corrective action. I think we passed a bylaw a few years ago that would require that person to clean that up. But that's unacceptable. And I think it's just disrespectful to the residents who live in this area.
I believe Jim, at the time, he did send letters. And I believe Council had been notified about it. And Council had sent something, too.
Right.
But.
So whatever's going on.
I'll follow up with Council.
If there's something that we're doing that we don't have the teeth to pursue, then we gotta, I think we gotta figure out what to change so we do have the teeth to follow through. But that is, it's very disrespectful to the residents who live in this area. I think it's just atrocious.
Right in between loss and working?
Yeah. People take pride in their properties and some, I don't believe the person lives in town. I think the owner does not live in town. It's just a piece of property for them. They don't care. They don't care about the residents. And to me, that's disrespectful. All right.
You did pass a new bylaw, too.
Yeah. All right, DPW, I guess we're back on the Sloker Street Night Ave. Any update on that or anything?
There is, the engineering firm is, wants to meet with the Board of Selectment representatives in mid-January. They have just returned an email. So I will talk to Mr. Gaspar, and he and I can meet with them.
Sounds good. All right, Mr. Kelly, Town Minister's Report.
As far as the Spring Town Meeting, we are looking at revenue estimates. I would ask the Board if they could look at their schedules to schedule a meeting with the Board, joint meeting with the Board of Selectment and FinCom in early January to establish revenue figures that we can build the budget from.
Right.
As far as procedural changes, the moderator has suggested that the moderator read the article language and the Board of Selectment member delivers a limited motion rather than reading the same article twice to town meeting.
Right. Thank you.
And we will discuss with Council to make sure that it's legal. I've continued to meet with the golf course folks, the subcommittee. We've discussed chain of command. I also have met with Dana and Nick as far as making sure all of the devices and the purchase of service, cash registers, et cetera. Talked to Munis so we don't have to worry about them reporting what goes on down the golf course. It will go directly to Munis. As far as vacancies go, I've talked to members and the Chair of the Planning Board. We're looking as to give a recommendation to the Board concerning the town planner position. And we have contacted a few more people who showed some interest in the facilities maintenance foreman. But there's been no response back after we gave them the job descriptions and described the work and the expected salary. Munis, we are dealing with the update and what is going on with as far as invoice cloud coordinating. We have a possible vendor that we've talked to concerning the dog licensing that is acceptable to Munis, acceptable to the town clerk. We will probably in the, if not the next meeting, then the first meeting in January, be able to report in depth. We are on track to make sure that we don't have anything fall through the prax as far as the dog licensing. RFPs for legal services. I drafted one and submitted it to the Board. When the Board wants to issue it, we will issue it. Liability insurance, I've contacted four groups now. And we are asking that they present, once they review our loss, our claims information loss ratios, that they present programs to be in competition with MYA. Health insurance, I've met with NFP a couple times. Our loss ratio is worse than last year. There are, the catastrophic cases are different from last year. So we're not looking at a good renewal from Harvard. So definitely, we're going up for an RFP in January. If we go to MYA, we'd expect a 3% to 10% per year increase over a two-year contract. However, there are a number of group purchasing opportunities out there. And we are exploring all of them to make sure that when we issue the RFP, it goes directly to them with all the information. And in your packet, you have the report from RFP that shows our losses. And then there's no real change in the ARPA report from last time. We're just waiting to meet with the engineering company to see what they propose.
Very good. Selectment announcements.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody out there in TV land and to all our employees.
And I'll agree with that. All right. This is our, well, we've got a meeting on the 20th, so we can do it again. We'll see. You know something I don't?
I don't, I don't.
Mr. Kelly, do you have the, from the mayor, that announcement regarding Lake Street?
No.
Okay. Well, anyway, we got word yesterday that the city of New Bedford, the mayor's office put out a press release that they have agreed to the MOU regarding Lake Street, which is really exciting. Just waiting on city council approval, which, from what I understand, should take place within the next couple of weeks. So once that is done, we can start the process, finally, of moving forward with upgrading Lake Street. It's going to be a process for permitting, but there's some minor things, some cosmetic things that we can do over there that'll make it look better, but also, you know, improve the traffic flow in and out of the parking lots and things of that nature. Hopefully, we'll be able to get moving with guardrails up and down Lake Street and cut out some dead trees and walking paths. All the stuff we've been talking about for the last couple of years. Hopefully, finally, we'll get moving in the right direction, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd also like to remind people that do not drop off mattresses on Lake Street. I had to pull one out of the woods last week. The DPW came right down and picked it up. But if anybody does feel like dumping mattresses, please just call me first. I'd be more than happy to take care of it for you. It's not an offer to pay for everybody's mattress disposal, but I'd much rather not have to drag a mattress out of the woods. It's not very nice. So if anybody does have a problem with disposal, just get in contact with us and we can figure out an arrangement. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Gentlemen, I suppose allegedly, Selectmen's meeting, December 20th. Four o'clock, we'll see how that goes.
We just didn't want to miss it like you did Thanksgiving.
That's right. And we're not going to go into executive session tonight. So scrap that. So is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right.